Alderpersons present are everyone with the exception of Alderperson Kothe and the District Two vacancy. Thank you all for being here, and those joining us in the audience or viewing from home. Item three on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
Pledge allegiance.
... The United States of America, and through the Republic of America, stands on a nation under and without the will of liberty and justice of the world.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda this evening is the explanation or the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to do so may do so on agenda items appearing before us this evening, in which alderpersons are able to or can yield their time and invite you to the podium to speak for no longer than five minutes. And again, items that are appearing before us on our agenda. Item number five on our agenda this evening is a reading of the minutes of the previous meetings held on August 20th and September 3rd. See attachments one and two in your packets. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding those items?
Motion by Blazer.
Is there a second? Second by Zerflu, request to speak. Alderperson Rayom, you're first.
I don't disagree with what the minutes have, but we had discuss, there was discussion last month at the end of the meeting on one of the commissions, zoning board of appeals. I meant to find out today if, for sure, it was mentioned about that an appeal could be made or done and whatever, and what action that was taken by that commission. And it just, it did go through, but I don't know if you remember, Sue off the top of your head, it had, and I guess I didn't know that evening when we left if there was going to, you know, if the council had initiated an appeal or whatever. So, you know, I'm not disagreeing with what the minutes have to say, it's just...
Right. The council did not give me direction to file an appeal. It wasn't, you know, on the agenda. I think what, going forward, I think what we will do is do the timing of the zoning board of appeals meetings, kind of where they are at now, to make sure that if city staff thinks it's a good idea to possibly appeal a decision, that then there is a council meeting, or I guess it could even be a legislative meeting, within that appeal time in order to give direction to the council and be able to file a timely appeal. Right now, how it is, it's kind of, I think it might be even the, kind of, the week before council, and then by the time the minutes come, we're outside the 30 days, so I think we can be better at timing those and then getting those in front of you. And I think what you're saying, and maybe what the council was saying at the end of the meeting, was that you would be interested in knowing about those types of situations and be given the opportunity to appeal, and I think that's what we can do going, going forward, to make sure that there's time and that you could have time to consider it.
Motion, a second, to approve the minutes from those two meetings. Please cast your ballots. Oh, Alderperson Kellogg, sorry, I thought that was...
I just have a question as a follow-up. It seems to me, if there's an item on the zoning commission that we, that they can't approve, why is it on? You know, it seems, I heard last month, last month, that it shouldn't happen with that fence in particular, but the idea is that if it can't happen, then why go through the motions of having the zoning commission vote on it? It should, it should be a null and void.
Everybody has a right to appeal, and they have to fill out an application and state the legal grounds for that, and sometimes they, they might state that they have a hardship when maybe they don't, so they're allowed that opportunity to show whether they have that or not. And so, my, my issue is with, that I believe in, on occasion, the board of appeals has not correctly followed the law and has given variances when it's not permissible under the law, so, and there are times when it is appropriate, so, but, you know, they are entitled to appeal, and there is no such, we can't really screen the appeals and say, well, this isn't, I mean, as long as it's, you know, they set forth the ordinance, they state the relief that they want, you know, we allow them to appeal, so.
Thanks. So, no further requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item six on our agenda this evening is my report. Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and those here watching from home. And September means back to school and recruitment for the Mayor's Youth Council. Along with recruiting new members, they're also gearing up for their own elections to fill their officer positions. If you know of someone who might be interested in joining the Mayor's Youth Council, you can find the information and the current application on the city's website under the Mayor's Youth Council section. There's also a video being shared on social media for individuals to learn more about the program. When we meet in October, we'll be welcoming our new members and begin the project selection process for the upcoming year. Some members of the beautification council who also participate in Bird City efforts are present tonight at the Legislative Committee in support of their waterfall feeding ban ordinance. They're also passionate about this ordinance as minimizing public nuisance, as well as promoting a clean and welcoming community. They will meet 4:30 this Thursday here at City Hall to discuss winter and potential 2020 projects. The minutes from the Park and Rec Commission were just distributed, and I will draw attention to the, actually, just completed, I believe, in the last day or so. I will draw attention to the Robinson Park item where the commission desires to create a long-range plan for that park, as one does not currently exist. Additionally, the city is working to establish a tree replacement fund to replace trees in parks and other public spaces. One such donor has pledged a donation to that fund, and will be circulating that, that fund in front of other donors for their consideration. Despite the skate park being closed as a result of unsafe situations over the weekend, the park, as I understand, will reopen tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. Communication of future concerns will be shared with the commission and staff to ensure that we can make people aware of this, and we can better understand the circumstances in which the call might have been made. In the area of the airport, the taxiway A project is nearly complete, and Waterworks and Lighting Commission will begin, when they get caught up, will begin to work on the electrical associated with that project. Overall, fuel sales and aircraft, aircraft activity were slightly higher for August than they were August of last year, closing out a really successful summer season, and September will be just as busy, we predict, as it was last year, September. In the area of aquatics, project crews advance on this place daily. The bathhouse has its, has had its floors poured. The plumbing and piping is also being installed in the wall cavities for those buildings. The top pool has been cured, poured and cured. The piping from the equipment building to the activities pool is being installed, and what's left is being framed and completed. The diving and lap pools, in this, in the diving slash lap pool, the stainless gutter was installed and tested recently. The installation of masonry block in the equipment building continues, as well as topsoil and grading work, and will continue to host tours to interested community members and potential donors on that project. In the East Riverbank project, all that's left of Phase One is to install a few of the amenities, including grills and garbage and recycling bins in Demet's Park and the East Riverbank Conservancy areas. That product, that work was delayed due to prioritizing storm cleanup work after the July event. In Phase Two, the remaining storm sewer has been installed in Veterans Park, and crews have moved on to pouring sidewalk and the bench pads. With Phase One near completion, we're hosting a ribbon, we're planning to host ribbon cutting in celebration event in Demet's during the month of October, so look for more information as the date and the planning, planning progresses on that. On the East Grand Avenue project, Third Street and Lincoln Street East Jackson has been open for some time to cross-traffic. It is anticipated either later this week or earlier next week, the stretch between Lincoln Street and, sorry, Second Street and Lincoln East Jackson may reopen. The concrete and lighting work remains as crews get even closer to wrapping up this project. A grand reopening of the East Grand Avenue corridor is scheduled to take place October 2nd from 11 to 1, with food vendors set up over the lunch hour to celebrate the completion of this project. City crews are also making good progress on the Chase Street work between 17th and 21st Avenues, and work is anticipated to begin in the Centralia Lot, Centralia Parking Lot on October 8th, with a portion of that lot closed. For alderpersons, I did share a phasing plan with all of you, so check your emails for that, that explains that half the lot will be, remain open to users during the phasing of that construction project. On the Metalco Aluminum Manufacturing Plant, all permits have been issued and their contractors have begun mobilization and site work. We're currently in the planning stages of a formal groundbreaking event, and this event is tentatively set for the first week in October, the first, Tuesday the first, at 12:00 noon, so watch for a formal invitation to come from, from the company as the details are being worked out on that. City staff and I have been working through reviewing budget requests. A number of budgets were submitted on time, so we thank the departments for that, and other departments are continuing to work on theirs, and the goal is to have the final budget, executive budget prepared and sent to the council by the first of October. In the Rapids Rediscovered Program, letters were mailed to property owners recently that we targeted for the program, and the follow-up communication will occur in the coming weeks. In the category of attended, hosted, and participated, hosted coffee sessions with residents on September 7th at Perkins, and today at Hilltop Grand Village, senior housing behind Home Depot. Held a successful bike ride with the mayor last night, which was attended by, I think, a dozen of us, came out to ride along the beautiful River, River Trail, which we went up into Beeren and came back to Demet's, or, sorry, to Veterans Park. Held a city update presentation to the local BNI chapter on August 21st, and spoke to the Assumption Assembly, which is Assumption High School and Middle School students, on city updates and recruitment for the youth council this past Monday, and attended and judged the ever-difficult choice of the mayor's choice of the Grand Affair Car Show, which was two Sundays ago, and participated in the city golf outing, which was a nice opportunity to engage with city staff and the various vendors that decide to submit a team and support the city golf outing. In the area of ribbon cuttings over the last month, Riverhill Dental, one of the dentists celebrated a ribbon cutting there. Central Home Improvement Outdoor, sorry, Indoor Decor Shop held a ribbon cutting, as well as Members Advantage Credit Union, as they completed their major renovation project most recently. In area proclamations, declared Rail Safety Week in the city next week, this 22nd through the 28th, and remind folks to tune into my radio show tomorrow, 10:00 a.m. on WFHR, or stream live via your smartphone or computer. And that concludes my report. Item seven is discussion regarding candidates for District Two vacancy and appointment of District Two alderperson. As we all know, there was a vacancy in the District Two alderperson position, and, and as of last Friday, candidates had to submit their letter of interest to the city clerk, and we had five individuals submit their information to the clerk and to the council. That was all, I believe, sent to the council then throughout the weekend on Friday, for those that got it in on Friday. Individuals' names, Dean Veneman, Rachel Ollary, Carolyn Martin, Vernon Virjinsky, and Todd Furkey submitted interest. I'll ask the city attorney to explain the process in which we're going to, unless we want the four individuals to speak, and then we can talk about the process. Let's do that, maybe, because it's fresh, because having an odd number with the number of candidates, there's a number of scenarios that can arise. So, in that order, I will ask, at least the way the ballot's been drawn up by our clerk, in this order to come to the podium. I don't think Dean Veneman is here. So, Rachel, do you want to come up and go up to the podium and introduce yourself, and anything you want to share about yourself, and perhaps individuals want to, or council members want to ask some questions?
Okay. Hi, I'm Rachel Ollary. I live on 18th Avenue South in town here. I am a stay-at-home mom of four beautiful children, six, three, two, and one. So, life can get a little crazy, but I am looking to be able to invest a little bit in this city. So, that is why I submitted my letter of interest and my resume.
Any questions for Ms. Ollary? All right. Thank you. Carolyn, do you want to come to the podium, please?
Hello. My name is Carolyn Martin. I am also a resident of, obviously, the city of Wisconsin Rapids, and I live on 20th Avenue. I submitted my letter of interest for this vacancy because, as a mother and a female, I noticed there was a little bit of a lacking diversity on the council, so I thought this was a great time for me to try to throw my name in for this opportunity. I, gosh, sorry, I'm really nervous. My kids have now gotten older, so they don't need me as much, so I like to stay involved and stay busy, so I have extra time to help out with things, so.
Great. Any questions, alderpersons? Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next on our list is Vernon Virjinsky. Bud, you want to come to the podium, please, and introduce yourself?
Honorable mayor, members of the common council, I imagine that tonight, this council will try to seat someone on the council that's got some experience with the city government and its operation, and I, I believe I have that experience. I started working for the city as a laborer, the lowest level of employment with the city as there was. Within six months, I was appointed equipment operator. And six years later than that, this very council appointed me as street superintendent. At one time, I had 83 people in the department working for me because we had two sewer crews going, and we were in the midst of a sewer separation program. Most of the city lied in the lower areas, had flooded basements when we had rainstorms. We had a major problem. When I was mayor, there was over 200 employees that worked for the city. In, between the time that I was street superintendent and the time I became mayor, I was appointed operations director, and I was over all the departments in the city, the street department, the park department, sign department, wastewater treatment, in charge of all maintenance of city properties. When I was in the street department, the first thing I found out was that our wastewater treatment plant only had one certified operator. If that operator left, the city was in deep trouble. So, we set out to train all of our wastewater treatment operators to be the highest grade. It wasn't something that we could accomplish overnight. It took two to four years before they could reach the highest grade, and they had to be trained, and they had to pass tests conducted by the DNR. When I finally took over as mayor, I found out that our fire department, we had firefighters, and we had some paramedics, but not everyone was a paramedic. So, we set out to train our firefighters as paramedics. This made them better employees, and they provided a better service to the public. I worked with this gentleman over here on the budgets. When I took office, for city purposes, the tax rate was over $14. When I left the mayor's position, the tax was 1025. When I took the mayor's position, we were almost $18 million in debt. When I left, we were $7.6 million in debt, and I was proud of reducing that debt and reducing the tax rate. In closing, I'd like to say that I think I'm qualified. I had a lot of years with the city. I appreciate what the city did for me. They gave me a good education, probably education that I couldn't get in classroom. And I still think that I have some time and some services that I could provide the city. My wife passed away, my children passed, left home. I have time on my hands. I can investigate. I can look at the various projects that we got and probably offer some assistance and some advice. Thank you.
Any questions for Bud? Okay. Thank you, Bud. And Todd Furkey, come to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Todd Furkey. I know, I guess, probably all of you, and I'm thankful for the experience that I had received being District Two alderperson, and I want to state, first off, I'm thankful for the people that have come forward to put city before self. As a former alderperson and city leader, I know that it takes a lot of time, a lot of commitment, a lot of personal time that maybe you had intended for other purposes, that you are now conversing with constituents, talking about their problems, and that's all part of the deal. And I understand that. I welcome that. I would like to say that my two terms as District Two alderperson, I was involved with the aquatics, was one of the frontrunners with Alderman Rayom, going to Nina and Green Bay, Oshkosh area, looking at other pools, the East Riverfront Development. I also was involved with that as far as that going through, and I want to say too, that when I was the alderperson for District Two, I did my best. I really did, and I put a lot of time in it, and I was prepared at every meeting, at every opportunity, when people come forth to me, talk, talk to me at McDonald's, at Culver's, wherever, called me at home. I took time out for them and would do so again, and no matter who you choose tonight, and certainly you have many candidates that are willing and able to, again, put city before self, taking time away from family is hard, but I will certainly be happy whoever is chosen because I know that District Two will be represented well, so I'm thankful for that. And if you have any questions for me, I certainly can answer them for you, or I can sit down.
Any questions for Mr. Furkey? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Because we find ourselves in this very fortunate position to have so many interested individuals from the district, I think I would repeat what I've said to each individually, that regardless of the outcome, we've got boards and commissions to, to consider your service as well. So, thanks again for applying your, putting in your application for the, to represent your district and represent the city's interests as a whole. Attorney Schill, do you want to walk through the process? I do see there's individuals that want to speak, so I just want, is there questions about the process from the two that requested to speak? Okay. So, we'll have Sue speak, and then, oh, okay. Okay, thanks.
Right. I guess first you would call for nominations, so if any of the alderpersons wish to nominate any of the candidates, they would do so. Nominations do not require a second, so it's just a simple nomination. And then, once we have all the nominations, and those are closed, then we're going to vote. Now, the issue is that we don't have a specific policy or rule on, on how this is handled, especially when you have multiple, four or five candidates, assuming, you know, if everyone would be nominated. The default basically is that an appointment, or any candidate, would need at least three votes to be appointed, and that's because it's, that's what a majority of a quorum is. Right now, the body really only has seven members, so a quorum for seven is four, and, no, a quorum for seven is five, no, four. Seven, three and a half, four, I'm sorry, four. And a majority of the four would be three, so that's why you need at least three votes. Now, that could be, you could decide that we want more than three votes, that someone should have, to have more than three votes in order to be chosen, and I know, I spoke with alderperson Blazer briefly before, and that, you know, that might be something that you want to consider. So, the first thing is, what is the number of votes that someone would need to get in order to be appointed, because you're going to have multiple, multiple people, and someone might not get three, or might not get four. Then, assuming that whatever that number is, let's say you say, well, if on the first ballot someone gets four, then that's the person. Well, then, if someone gets four, that's the person that you're going to choose then. But if someone doesn't get four, then how are you going to handle the next vote? Are you going to drop off the lowest person, the person who sees the least number of votes? So, I, I mean, you can do it however you want. I know, maybe, alderperson Blazer has some thoughts on, on how it can be handled.
Alderperson Blazer?
And I agree with Attorney Schill. I, myself, I'd feel more comfortable if it was whittled down to, we had a choice of two, and then the majority, I'd like, I personally would like to see a majority of four, you know, since there are six of us here, so majority of the attendance would be four. And so, if, however we get to that process, I guess maybe we can wrestle that, but I kind of like the idea of dropping off the lowest vote, and then trying to get it to two, and then we can vote on that, and then there's the majority vote from that point.
So, I guess I would call for process sake. Is there any objection to setting the four as the, as the winner, I guess, of the appointment process here? Any objection? So, you're no objection? Okay. Alderperson Kubaszek, did you have anything further, alderperson Blazer?
No. I just want to make a general statement, as long as I get the floor. I know Mr. Furkey and Mr. Virjinsky, and yesterday I took the opportunity and I called the other three, and after I got done, I was hoping I could take a couple of resumes and set them off to the side. But District Two's lucky, they have five great people, and it, as I, I think I told some of them, it's frustrating because we're none of us live in District Two, and we need to choose somebody for that district to represent them, and, and like Mr. Furkey said, there's, there's five great people that are very interested in serving, and very interested in learning about government, and being a part of the process. So, they did not make it easy for me, and so, I, last night I was laying in bed thinking, boy, maybe I shouldn't have made the phone call, because it would have been easy to set a couple of people aside that I don't know, but it made it more difficult for me because they, there's five really great people there. Thank you.
Alderperson Kubaszek?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback off of Shane right here and lobby for that ninth-at-large Alderperson district, but I also want to, because it's a case where if we don't get four, what if we don't get four in the final two? It's going to be a three-to-three tie, unless someone abstains, but I would highly recommend that there isn't any abstentions with this. We, we are, this is one part of our duty that we need to do. So, then the question is, what happens if we do get a three-to-three tie for the final vote? And as far as I'm concerned, and no disrespect, Mr. Mayor, the mayor's not going to break the tie. If, I make the recommendation that somehow if we deadlock with three-to-three, or deadlock with a tie for three consecutive votes, that it goes to something as simple as a coin toss, that would be like in the clerk's office. If there's a tie in the election, if there is two people in the spring election that come up with 100 votes and 100 votes, after recall and everything occurs, that it's still 100 to 100. It's up to the It's up to the clerk how that is done, or the two individuals as well, whether it's a coin toss, or whether it's drawing names out of a hat, or pulling a card, whoever's got the highest card type of a thing, or drawing straws. So that's what I, I make a suggestion, that if there is a tie, and I always guess, I always look at the worst-case scenario situation, that in the event of a deadlock, if we vote three times and it's still deadlock, that we would flip a coin.
So the proposal on the table is to, and I guess I'll do a quick comment, I would agree, I'd prefer not to break the tie. Even though the highest, one of the highest offices or branches of government, the U.S. Senate, has the presiding officer even break ties in the case of the U.S. Senate, breaking a tie to the lowest level of government. I'd prefer not to break the tie in this. This is your appointment. So the proposal was, after three votes, if there wasn't a highest vote getter of four, then we'd go to a coin toss. Any objection to that proposal?
You mean a coin toss of the two? You mean if there's a tie?
If there's a tie, sorry.
So only if there's a tie?
Only in the case of a tie. Yeah. I, so there'd be three votes, and then if there was a tie at the last...
Okay. So the first vote, let's say someone gets four votes, is, will that be your choice? There won't, there won't be any more voting? Is that clear?
That's my understanding.
At the first vote, if someone gets four, that will be your choice. If no one gets four, and it's a tie 3-3, I can tell you that under the statutes, the mayor does have the, well, the ability to break the tie. I don't think he wants, he wants to though, but I, I'm saying, I don't think you can take that away from him. And I've cleared that with the league. I went through these scenarios with them yesterday on the phone. So I, if there is a tie at 3-3, I, he could, he's a member of the council. He can be the fourth vote. But whether he does that or not, if he does not want to do that, then we're back in the same, you know, then we're, I'm assuming proceeding, like Alderperson Kubitschak said, where you're going to go to another vote. So, so the first vote, four, if there's four votes, that would be the person. If you go to a second, so if no one gets four, are we dropping someone out, the low-vote getter? And then we're going to keep dropping one out until there's two, or until someone gets four? Well, I should say until someone gets four, not until there's two. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, is that going to work?
For me, yeah.
Something's going to happen where it's going to be all screwed up, and then we're not going to know what to do.
Oh, no.
But I just wanted to prevent that, and so...
This can get it figured out.
Okay.
Okay.
So, oh, does someone have an arm wrestle?
Nobody wants to offer an arm...
Can I say something?
Yeah. Do you have a statement?
Well, I thought in the beginning, we were just like introducing ourselves. I didn't know that was like our plea for our spot. So I was just kind of like, I didn't want to pour my heart out and waste your guys' time if you're going to have questions for us later. So I'm wondering if I can speak my piece, or is that too late? I don't want to interrupt your voting scenarios here.
Okay. All right.
But if you guys are okay with that.
Sure.
Okay, because none of you guys know me, and I don't think I know any of you, other than Mr. Blazer, who I spoke to on the phone yesterday. I feel like I'm coming out of nowhere, the wild card. And why would I be qualified for this position? Well, I mean, I'm sure you looked at my resume. I have no government experience, although I am a drill sergeant at my house. I run a tight ship. I manage our budget at home, and I think I have a lot to bring to the table. You want to know what the young families in this community want? I could offer that opinion on this panel, because I know it is not represented. I am a millennial, and I am a young mom of children, so we are very involved in the community, and so I can speak to that. I also love communicating with people in the community, so I know there's a lot of connections that are made when we go back and forth, you're talking about projects and talking to people who are heading projects and all that stuff. I'm passionate about that in our community. And I think things like this, like, I'm sure there's going to be a learning curve, because I don't have any government experience or background. But I'm a quick study. I can learn quick, and I'm passionate. When I dive in, I dive in deep. We've had situations in our own home that have come up with my kids, and I become a student of whatever the problem is. We had a daughter who had a flat head. She had, what are they called, pleiocerephaly? I Googled that. I became a professional. I talked to all sorts of people to get all sorts of information, to see where we're supposed to go. I research things, and when I'm passionate about something, I will go full bore. So I think that's what I can offer, is some passion, some diversity, some excitement, maybe. So anyways, that's me.
Thank you. Okay. Alderperson Katnau, the floor is yours. Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Schill, I'm looking all over. I've been, I tried to research it. You mentioned that it's in state statute, that the mayor has the authority to break the tie. Where in state statute are you referencing?
Well, I mean, that he, when there's a tie on a vote, he has the authority to break the tie. That's, well...
But that's what I mean. If you can reference me a state statute number, that'd be wonderful.
I mean, we've done that many times before. I don't know, we've never raised the issue before.
But it's a case, if you're in front of a judge and you say, hey, I got this information from this person, you know, it's very valid, but I don't really have it in writing, or this person isn't available for comment in person.
I understand. I understand. I will pull up the statute for you.
I'm looking in chapter two. I was in chapter two. Last, I was looking in chapter two.
You know what? I had an opinion too that addressed the mayor breaking a tie for an appointment, and I don't think I brought it.
While you look that up, can I make a comment?
Alderperson Katnau was first, and then I'll come over to Kellogg.
Thank you. My comment's not to the process. I was actually just going to speak to the candidates quick. And while she's looking that up, I'll just say, I wish this was able to be decided by the residents of District Two. We did mull that over, unfortunately, with, for time's sake, that is not a possibility. If we did, that person would have only been elected for four months before they would have been up for reelection. So it just didn't make sense, and we did want to get someone in there to represent District Two. But with that being said, no matter what happens tonight, I think all you guys are great candidates. And in April, and starting at the end of the year, actually, you'll be able to take out papers, to go get your signatures, and get on the ballot for April, and then we can let the people of District Two decide. So that's what I had to say. I hope all you guys are out, Ken, in spring, and your residents can decide who to choose out of you.
Okay. It's 62.11, paron one. The mayor and Alderpersons shall be the common council. The mayor shall not be counted in determining whether a quorum is present at a meeting, but may vote in case of a tie. When the mayor does vote in case of a tie, the mayor's vote shall be counted in determining whether a sufficient number of council has voted favorably or unfavorably on any measure. 62.11, paron one. And there's also a league opinion on breaking ties for appointments. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to pull that up. I don't think I made a copy of that.
Well, that's being researched. Alderperson Kellogg, did you have something?
Well, two points. If it gets too elaborate that we have three ties, and if the mayor chooses not to vote, it seems to me, if we wait one month, we would have seven Aldermen to make a vote, and that would break a tie most likely. So it's just food for thought. The other thing is, I think all these candidates have gone through the effort of giving everybody their resume. I've had phone calls, Shane's called some of them. It seems to me, I like to nominate all five, to say one, or to say the other. We're fortunate to have five quality candidates, and I'm going to nominate all.
We have a nomination for all five candidates, and so they're little, close nominations, and go back to, Alderperson Kubitschak, did you have any further question or clarification? Okay. We've got five, all Alderpersons are now nominated to be considered for the position of District Two Alderperson. And Alderpersons, you all should have a ballot marked with your district number. I think the clerk has distributed those, is that right? At all your places. So if you could please mark your, mark your vote, vote for one, not all of them, and the clerk will come by and collect them.
So they have their number on there, right?
Yep.
Well, it's, it's public. It has to be available. Whether you actually read them during the, that's up to you.
Or just read the number of votes for each.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I have two votes for Vernon Verginsky. That was District Seven and District Four. I have one vote for Todd Furkey, that's District Six. And I have three votes for Carolyn Martin, District Eight, District One, and District Three.
All right. So since no candidate reached the threshold of four votes, the, as per the process that was just agreed upon, Todd Furkey will be eliminated from the, is it just one for Todd? Right? Okay. Then Todd Furkey, sorry?
And Dave, too.
Oh, sorry. Dean, Rachel, and Todd would then be eliminated from the voting round. So the clerk will distribute another ballot. Now, they already have a second ballot in front of them? Great. So mark your selection, please.
So it's between...
So it's between Carolyn and Vernon Verginsky.
Right. And the mayor breaks a tie in those instances. Well, I just...
You have not? Oh. Ah, right, right, right. Yeah, so... Which would be the two zeros?
So then 10 for these, and then, okay, so forget these.
So is there any objection to retaining Todd Furkey as an option, or objection to the process? The process would be to remove the two zeros, not the, not the lowest in this group. So the options, as they are, are Carolyn Martin, Vernon Verginsky, and Todd Furkey, being your three options at this stage. Right.
Okay. We have two votes for Todd Furkey, District Three and District Six. We have two votes for Carolyn Martin, District Eight and District One. And we have two votes for Vernon Verginsky, District Seven and District Four.
Are you sure you don't want me to break the tie?
You can't break that.
No, I know, just kidding. I'm just kidding.
All right. Round three.
All right. So we've got, since we wouldn't eliminate anyone that round, we're going to do another revote, correct?
Yes.
So you should have ballots in front of you. Promise we're not playing Russian roulette tonight.
Yes. I have more. How about the girls?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We have two votes for Todd Furkey, District Three and District Six. And we have three votes for Vernon Verginsky, District Four, District Seven, and District Eight.
All right. In which case, we'll drop off the lowest number of votes, which was Carolyn Martin. So we'll go to the next round of voting. And the clerk will be distributing ballots. Those are the old ones, yep.
We have three votes for Todd Furkey, Districts One, Three, and Six. And three votes for Vernon Verginsky, Districts Four, Seven, and Eight.
Okay. So it's our first official tie. So now we'll move into our second round of voting. I have the option to break the tie, so I'll decline to break the tie, as I had already stated I would, though it sounds like I'm going to stand up. My watch tells me I'm going to stand up.
All right. Here we go.
Another ballot, round of ballots?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, I'm just standing.
All right. Here's the next round of ballots.
Yeah, they're just going to write the person there.
Yep. And you write either Vernon Verginsky or Todd, and your district on the face. And we have four votes for Vernon Verginsky, District One, Four, Seven, and Eight.
All right. Well, that concludes the process. Bud, congratulations. We'll come up, thank you all again for your application, as well as the observing democracy in action. And again, as Alderperson Katna said, the vacancy, or the, yeah, the filling of the vacancy will be through the April election season, which encourage you to contact the clerk on the process on that. So then move on to item number eight, which is the oath of office for District Two Alderperson. And I believe the clerk will be administering the oath. So Bud, if you'd come forward, please, and we'll administer the oath of office.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Vernon Verginsky.
I, Vernon Verginsky.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To serve as Second District Alderperson.
As Second District Alderperson.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. I think we're just going to take a quick minute here to, for now Alderperson Verginsky to get seated, and for the remote to get distributed and that for the piece here. Alderperson Raum, did you have?
Make a comment?
Sure, please, yeah.
About the process? And maybe it'll take, maybe it takes a referral to go in, but I would like the council to take into consideration, you know, after going through this process here, is this, to take a look at, is this the right way to do it or not? I guess if I was to do this again, I would look at some type of questions that the council would agree on beforehand, questions, four, five, six questions, the same questions to ask all of the candidates to get their answers from, that, you know, us making the decision, which is, that we can do, but actually, I guess that, more of a process, I think, to go through this again. And not necessarily because there was five people versus two, I think, a better, tighter process, even with two people, of questions agreed upon beforehand, so they all, they get asked the same questions to give the answers to, such a, you know, and, you know, I wonder if, and maybe it has to be by statute, but do they really have to be nominated? They asked to run, or they applied to run? It's a difference then, I guess, if, you know, any of us that did run for office went out and got nomination papers, for one thing, from people within our districts and that. So, you know, I just wonder if there's a way to tighten, that we should look at to tighten up the process that we go through. So, that's all.
All right, so, great, we're all set. Alderperson Kubaszek, floor is yours.
I'll second the motion.
So there wasn't officially a motion made, it was more of a referral, right? But duly noted, okay. Item number nine, election of a voting Alderperson member to the Water Works and Lighting Commission. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item? It'd open the floor for nomination, I guess. Sorry. Alderpersons Zerflu?
Well, I was just going to ask you, Honor, like, who's interested? They meet at one o'clock, I believe, typically.
On Wednesdays.
On Wednesdays midday. So I'm not sure who would have the availability, but if there's interest, I'll nominate.
They said that they would possibly change that time to meet. You know, if that's a problem with some people, because of work, et cetera, they could meet later in the day, just like a lot of our meetings are at five, and the library board's at five. So I don't know if that should be a consideration, because somebody who really wants to be on there, even though they're working, I think, they mentioned that they would have to adjust.
Thank you. Alderperson Blazer, the floor is yours.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, I thought Alderperson Kellogg or Alderperson Raum regularly attended the meetings, and I was just going to nominate one of them if they had that interest. And then we got to have a vote. Okay, I'll nominate Alderperson Kellogg.
Are there any additional nominations?
I'd like to nominate Alderperson Verginsky.
Are there any additional nominations? Seeing none, I'll close nominations. We've got two individuals nominated. Do you want to do paper ballot for this? Or do you want to do the ayes and nays? We can do the, we can, what was the conversation over here?
We're just wondering if Bud accepted the nomination?
Oh.
If he was interested.
Did you want to acknowledge the, sorry, I saw a nod that you would accept. Did you want to, did you want to accept the nomination to be appointed to the Water Works and Lighting Commission, Bud? Water Works and Lighting Commission. Okay. Yeah, so we'll do, we'll do ayes and nays. So the first person to be appointed, or nominated, sorry, was Alderperson Kellogg, and the second being Alderperson Verginsky. So the ayes being Kellogg, and the nays being Verginsky. Is that clear to everybody?
So Alderperson Kellogg wins.
Congratulations. Alderperson, so item number 10 on our agenda is the council appointment of ethics committee members, attachment number three in our packets. And it looks like we've got one that was submitted to the clerk's office, is the only one the clerk's office received, for Eric Daven, who is a employee member, employee representative, I should say, that would like to apply for another three-year term. Are there, so this is a council, council appointment of members, so there isn't, there's how many vacancies?
There are. There are three vacancies right now, but there are three more coming up in November, I believe.
So we've had a call out for interested individuals to apply to the clerk's office?
Yes.
Right, and then those come to this body?
Yes.
So we've got one interested individual for a reappointment of the three total spots at this time.
That is correct.
Okay. This is an employee representative, okay. So it's not, they don't have three employees?
No.
Just the?
No, just one employee.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would open the floor for, well, if there's, I'd open the floor for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Katna, any discussion? Alderperson Zerflu?
Not for this appointment, I think Eric Daven is an extremely good fit for this committee. I've been on it, I'm pretty sure, for four years now, I'm just, I've never been, like, reappointed to it, and I'm not sure if we just kind of dropped the ball on that, or, I've been going to the meetings, they're twice a year, but I more have a question about my sitting on it as a council representative. The three-year term, I don't think would make sense.
You're saying it was not dealt with in the reorganization?
It was not.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll ask the clerk to review that, because that would have, that should have come through the reorganizational process. I would assume it coincides with the length of your, well, I should say it.
Yeah, that's.
Coincide with the.
That's why I thought I'd bring it up, because it, you know, really, it should be for a year, I think.
Should be, right.
But, I just draw attention to that, so.
Alderperson Kubaszek?
I nominate Joe Zerflu for the Ethics Board.
I'll only accept if there's no other interest.
And so we've got, well, I'm going to accept, because we didn't open the floor for nominations, we'll just do it, except is that a motion to appoint? And we've got a, is there a second? We've got a motion by Kubaszek, and a second by, sorry, I didn't hear who that was. Katna, all right. So, any additional, well, we didn't actually take a vote on the last one, though, so we have to dispose of both of them. Is there any opposition to packaging these two? All right, for ease of, the way the clerk's got the computer probably on this one, so. And since we have no other letters of interest, I believe that takes care of the employee and then the single Alderperson position on there. So please cast your ballots for both Eric Daven and Alderperson Zerflu.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Number 11 is my appointments to the Public Works Committee and Park and Recreational Committee, or Commission. I'd like to appoint newly seated Alderperson Verginsky to the Public Works Committee. Sounds like that's where his passion lies, and I'm sure he'd serve that committee well. And then, I believe this is also the mayor's appointment, yeah, it is. On the Park and Rec, I'd like to appoint Alderperson Tom Raum to the Park and Rec Commission. Item 12 is consider confirmation of my appointments to various boards and commissions, attachment number four in your packets. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding those appointments?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 13 is consider an authorizing resolution for the Urban Forestry Grant and Urban Forestry Catastrophic Grant, Storm Grant Programs as Recommended by the Finance and Property Committee on September 3rd, attachment number five in your packets. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding attachment five?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Kubaszek, is there a second? Second by Zerflu, any discussion? Alderperson Raum?
Thank you, Honor. And I'm going to, I support it, I just wanted to make a comment, is that, in the, in the resolution, is, be it further resolved, just so everybody is aware, is that applicant will budget a sum of sufficient to fully and satisfactorily complete the project, and hereby authorizes and empowers and so on, but that, budget a sum sufficient to fully and satisfactorily complete the project, so everybody is aware of that, but also that the grant, the grants are up to $50,000, if my memory is correct, from the finance meeting. So that's, there is an input from us.
And for clarification, Joe, the total app, the total project is, you're applying for the max, right? And so in terms of the match, I just want to be clear on understanding that everybody might have about any match that's required. It does say that it's going to execute, I'm assuming that means it's going to receive the grant, budget the amount, and then draw down the grant. But if you could clarify that.
Sure, so this is a reimbursement project grant. So if, if the city is successful, in the grant application, I included the costs of disposing of trees and costs of planting of new trees. And I indicated that the grant dollars would be used for the planting of the new trees, because we anticipate getting some FEMA funding for the removal of the other trees. But it is a reimbursement grant, which means that whatever cost the city incurs up to that $50,000, the city first has to pay those bills, and then would be reimbursed for them. It is a non-matching grant, so the city is not required to match any funds, but the city is required to first make payment and then receive reimbursement.
Thank you for the clarification. Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 14 is consider a resolution exempting the city of Wisconsin Rapids from paying Wood County Library Tax 2020, attachment number six in your packets. Alderperson Blazer, you're first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You got it. Second goes to Kubaszek, and motions to approve. Any further, or any requests to speak on that item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 15 is consider an ordinance removing the no parking restriction on Baker Drive between Washington Street and Franklin Street, as recommended by the Public Works Committee on September 3rd, attachment number seven in your packets. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Katna. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg, seeing Alderperson Kubaszek.
Yeah, just for clarification, do we have to have two readings on this? Or is this?
Unless it's unanimous, no, unless it's not unanimous. The parking ordinance, attachment seven?
No, traffic and parking ordinance is all in the current.
One reading.
Thank you.
Alderperson Raum? Okay. All right, seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 16 is consider a special ordinance annexing territory to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. The petitioner is Alexander Field Southwood County Airport Commission. See attachment number eight. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item? Alderperson Kellogg, you're first.
I would suggest, and sort of short one, Alderperson, that this be postponed until next month.
The motion by Kellogg to postpone for one month, is there a second? Second by Katna, are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, the motion is to postpone this, item number 16, until the next, I'm assuming to the next council meeting or the next, next month, okay. I'm assuming to the next council meeting or the next, next month, okay. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Item 17 is consider for adoption the actions of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Item A under 17 is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on September 3rd, and, not sure, did alderperson Coath make contact with anyone to read that report? Is there a volunteer? I'll read the first one, if somebody wants, unless somebody else is there. You just got it, alderperson Blazer's got it.
I think, meeting September 3rd?
Yes.
All right, I do have it up. Finance and Property Committee met at our 4:45 on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present. Also in attendance were alderpersons Raome, Kellogg, Mayor Verwing, the rest of the list is on file in the clerk's office. First item was called to order, Chairperson Coath called the meeting to order at 4:45. Item two, consider a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department to review quotes for a building security camera, door access control, and emergency alarm project. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Blazer, to approve the proposal from Access Security for the security camera, cameras, door access control, and emergency alarm project. The total cost of the three proposals were, from Access Security totaled $67,839, plus a 10% contingency of $6,784, that motion carried. Oh yeah, this is a long meeting, I forgot. Consider a request from alderperson Kellogg to review the implementation of the new police body cameras. Chief Blevins gave the Finance and Property Committee an update on that implementation of the new police body cameras, no action was taken. Item four was review and consider fire station building analysis, analysis proposals from MS Consulting and Wendell Corporation, five bugles design. It was moved by Coath, seconded by Blazer, to select the proposal from Wendell Corporation's five bugle design for a fire station building analysis, that motion carried. Item five was consider a referral from alderperson Kellogg to replace and install Wisconsin Rapids welcome signs. Alderperson Kellogg addressed the committee on the desire to install welcome signs at Highway 73 and 13 city entrances. The committee requested that the item be included in the 2020 budget request and explore a cost share with the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Now, item six was review and consider submitting an urban forestry catastrophic storm grant application. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Coath, to approve submitting an application for an urban forestry catastrophic storm grant, that motion carried. Item seven is review and consider submitting a grant application for the Third Avenue realignment project through the Municipal Street Improvement Discretionary Program. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to approve submitting the Municipal Street Improvement Discretionary Program Grant Application for the Third Avenue realignment project. That motion failed zero ayes and three nays. Consider for approval the hiring of Corbin Design for the completion of Wayfinding Design Plan. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Coath, to approve hiring Corbin Design for the completion of the Wayfinding Design Plans at a cost not to exceed $75,000, with the city's cost not to exceed $50,000. That motion carried with alderperson Blazer voting in the negative. Item nine is review and consider the approval of placement of a storage building on city-owned property currently leased by the Central Wisconsin BMX. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coath, to approve the placement of the storage building not to exceed 24 by 30 on city-owned property currently leased by the Central Wisconsin BMX inside the fence along the south end of the west line, west fence line, that motion carried. Item 10 is to consider a request from the city clerk to purchase a 44-inch wide four drawer King Fire, Fire King fire-related lateral file cabinet to house city records at a, at a cost not to exceed 6,500. Motion by Coath, seconded by Katna, to approve the purchase of the 44-inch wide four drawer Fire King fire-rated lateral file cabinet to house the city records at a, at a cost not to exceed 6,500. That motion carried with alderperson Blazer voting in the negative. Item 11 is consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim from Mr. David Cohen for damages to his vehicle allegedly caused by, or caused during a tree removal operation conducted by the city. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to deny that claim from Mr. David Cohen for damages to his vehicle, and that motion carried. Consider a request from Riser Fuel Fuels LLC, DBA, our store, number 77 Baltus, located at 1740 17th Avenue South, for a Class A beer and a Class A liquor license. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coath, to approve that request, and that motion carried. Item 13 is to consider a request from Riser Fuel LLC, DBA, our store, 78 Baltus, located at 2130 A Street South, for a Class A and a Class B, I'm sorry, a Class A beer and a Class A liquor license. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coath, to approve that request, and that motion carried. Number 14 is consider a request from Richards Liquor LLC, DBA, Richards Liquor LLC, to expand the premises located at 30, 33 A Street South on their Class A beer license and Class A liquor license to include 30, 31 A Street South. That motion carried, or, the motion by Coath, seconded by Katna, to approve that request to expand that premise location was, was granted, motion carried. Number, item 15 is consider a special events application from Current, Wisconsin Rapids, and the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, Inc., for a downtown on Tap Street event held on Friday, October 18th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Motion by Katna, seconded by Blazer, to, to approve the special events application from Current, Wisconsin Rapids, and the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, Inc. And suspension of the open container ordinance for, for the downtown on Tap Street event held, being held on Friday, October 18th, from 10:00 p.m., or 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and that motion carried. Item 16 is consider a special events application from the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, Inc., for a hometown Halloween event held, being held on Friday, October 11th, from 4:30 to 6:30. Motion by Coath, seconded by Katna, to approve the special events application from Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for the hometown Halloween event being held on October 11th, from 4:30 to 6:30, to include the street closure of First Avenue South from Grand Avenue to Goggan Streets, motion carried. Item 17, consider temporary Class B beer license for Opportunity Development Centers, Inc., located at 1191 Huntington Avenue, for a business after-hours event being held on September 9th. Motion by Katna, seconded by Blazer, to approve the temporary Class B beer license for Opportunity Development Centers, Inc., located at 1191 Huntington Avenue, for a business after-hours event held on September 9th, what, that motion carried. Consider temporary Class B beer license for St. Vincent de Paul Parish, located at 820 13th Street South, for their Oktoberfest event held on September 29th, from 11:30 to 2:30. St. Vincent? Oh, okay. That motion, motion by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to approve the temporary Class B beer license for St. Vincent de Paul Parish, located at 820 13th Street South, for their Oktoberfest event being held September 9th, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and that motion carried. Item 19 is to consider a temporary Class B beer license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., located at 320 West Grand Avenue, Suite 104, for an exhibition opening held on Thursday, September 5th, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to approve the temporary Class B beer license for the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., located at 320 West Grand Avenue, Suite 104, for their exhibition being held on September 5th, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., motion carried. Item 20 is to consider a temporary Class B picnic license for Assumption Catholic Schools, Inc., located at 445 Chestnut Street, for the Royal Event being held on September 21st and 22nd. There's motion by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to approve the temporary picnic license for Assumption Catholic Schools, located at 445 Chestnut Street, for the Royal Event being held September 21st and 22nd. Item 21 was out of the bills, motion by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to approve check number one to 599, and check number 77,623 to 77,714, and that motion carried. Item 22 is beverage operator license, it was moved by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to approve the beverage operator license applications, and applications with outstanding obligations. The approval is contingent upon those obligations being, being paid in full, that motion carried. Setting of the next, or the next meeting date of October 1st, 2019, at 4:45. Item 24, it was moved by Blazer, seconded by Katna, to adjourn the meeting, and with that, I would like to hold out item number eight and item number 10. Anyone else want to hold anything out? Item 13? Oh, no problem, I just- Yep, item 13. Anyone else with anything else?
Items eight, 10, and 13.
With that, I'll make a motion to adopt the balance of the report.
We have a motion by Blazer, and a second by Kubashak, to approve the balance of the report, with the exception of items eight, 10, and 13. Alderperson Raome, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor, no problems with that, I just have a question, refresh my memory again, and that's, uh, these events that we have and the dates, when, the dates, the dates were after the finance meeting, but the dates are before the council meeting. You know, I guess, refresh my memory on, I, I don't have a problem with it, it's just, you know, yeah.
So, that's an occurring, recurring event that the chamber does, so it, once it goes to Finance and Property, it does not need to go to council for approval? So Finance and Property does-
It just has to go to, it has to go to Finance.
Yes, it does, and they approved it, so it's, yep.
Right, and if it was denied, they had a, they would have an appeal right to the council, but otherwise Finance has the final say on it. And then if it is, like, a third time or more, then the clerk can approve it without having it to go to Finance.
Alderperson Zerflu, you're next.
I just wanted to make sure we're, we're withholding 13, but did, did we mean 14? Because I think 13 was just a renewal, wasn't it?
We mean 13, yeah. Okay, so it's wrong on the, okay. Are there further requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Oh, sorry. Ted, you want to vote?
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, we'll let the clerk get set, but we'll go ahead and move into item number eight. Okay, we're set. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding item eight?
I'll make a motion to approve item eight, consider for approval hiring of Corbin Design for the completion of the Wayfinding Design Plan.
A motion by Katna, is there a second? Second by Zerflu, alderperson Blazer, you're first.
Yeah, I'm just, as I said in the finance meeting, I think this item should, we're going into budget season, and I think this should be a budgeted item, and we can discuss it during budget time. So I'm just gonna vote no. Thank you.
Are there any further requests to speak? Just as a point of clarification, the city does budget annually for special projects from the room tax allocation, which is being funded from, if I'm not mistaken, Adam, is that correct? Okay. Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, four ayes, three nays.
I think we'll move on to item number 10. And we'll just let the clerk get set here. Item number 10 is the request from the city clerk. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item? Alderperson Kubashak?
I'd like to yield time to the city clerk to explain the need for the filing cabinet.
Thank you. We, all of the city records, we house in fireproof cabinets. We are completely out of space, we can't put one more book in the cabinet that we have, so I'd like to purchase another one. I, since the Finance and Property Committee, I did get another quote in, including delivery tax set up for around, it was under 5,200. So.
Does that conclude your question, alderperson Kubashak? Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
Guess I didn't want to have a big debate about it, but the big, large filing cabinet next to that one, is that all full? Because there's a Fire King-
We have two Fire King cabinets, one is the four-door lateral, and one is a four drawer, that's, that is completely full as well.
Thank you.
Are there, alderpersons, the floor is open.
I'll move to approve.
A motion to approve by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Kellogg? Alderperson Blazer, you're next, you're first.
Same reason, you know, this is an item that should be budgeted.
Thank you. Seeing no further requests, alderperson Zerflu?
I guess, is there, just given that it's a fireproof cabinet, I mean, is there a reason why we couldn't wait till budget time?
There are funds, discretionary funds, that are budgeted into the budget to handle equipment for the city, so.
So this is, this is taken out of pre-existing, this isn't really new?
Correct.
Yeah, annually, we set aside in our budget process for replacement accounts for furniture. Now, one could argue this is a new piece of furniture, but, Tim, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, I mean-
The balance of that account, and that is?
Annually, the budget built into, like, the copier charges and equipment charges is a depreciation, which is basically a replacement account that we use to purchase office equipment as it's needed, and then annually, at the carryover resolution, that's usually in March or April, that we carry that money forward in the budget for items for equipment and stuff like that, office equipment, I should say.
Okay, so I mean, there's, obviously, these are important records that you want to protect from things, so you're saying there is, like, urgency?
We, there is urgency, do we need it tomorrow? Probably not, but at the end of the year, we will. So by January 1st, we'll need to start another book, and it won't fit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderperson Blazer?
I guess I'm done arguing about it, because it's not worth arguing about. We have money in the budget for everything, it seems like, so, I just, I think it comes down to responsible budgeting, and, and I'm just against it, but I'm okay with it.
Seeing any, seeing no further requests to speak, the motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Item 13, which is a request from Riser Fuels LLC, doing business as store, our store, number 78 Baltus. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
So, this item currently... So, the Baltis stores are being sold, and the one on 8th Street does not actually have a Class A liquor license at the moment. It only has a Class B, and we are at our quota. So, that's why that one was... I asked for that one to be held out.
So, you would consider a request to...
To approve just the Class A beer license on number 13, which is the 8th Street location. The 17th Avenue location does currently have a Class A beer and a Class A liquor license.
Alder Persons, is there anyone wishing to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion as stated by the clerk.
Got a motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Alder Person Kubashak, you're first.
Thank you. Just for a little clarification, do we have a local ordinance that maxes out certain liquor licenses? Reason being is if we didn't, the state only limits Class B combo, beer and alcohol, at bars. But as far as Class A away, regardless if it's fermented malt beverages or liquor, we are not restricted at the state level. But we can create our own restrictions. So, if that's the case where we have our own restrictions, we could almost change policy as a city council and potentially even make that, increase the limit or make it unlimited. So, that's a power that we've got as the council. But, yeah. Ms. Gosick, would you speak to that? Thank you.
Sure. So, the state does mandate Class B liquor license, not the combo, just the liquor. There are quotas for that. Class A quotas, Class A liquor licenses, that is set by... We have an ordinance that you guys set that. So, that's something that I would like to make a referral to the Finance and Property Committee to take up the issue of the quota on that. We are over-quoted by two licenses. It's been that way for over five years. I don't know how far that goes back, but in... So, we do want to address that.
And if I could add, we... I did talk to Resor. They understood, they had assumed that that location had a beer and a liquor license, so they understand that it's not that... We don't have a liquor license to give them. And we did also explain that there would be a referral made to finance to consider that lifting of that quota or expanding that quota. So, they're happy with that at this time.
Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
You can cancel that. Thank you. You've already addressed it. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any further requests to speak?
Motion carried, six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Item 17B, the Public Works Committee meeting held on September 3rd, 2019. Alder Person Rayom, or actually Alder Person Kubashak, sorry. Memory, going back, creature habit here. Alder Person Kubashak, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. That is Kubashak, Tom Rayom, and Scott Kellogg were present. Others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item number 1, call to order. The meeting was called to order at 7:15 PM following a special city council meeting. Review... Item number 2, review and consider approving the installation of a permanent sanitary sewer line at the Public Works Sign Shop building. Motion by Kubashak, second by Rayom, was to authorize staff to seek proposals for a permanent sanitary sewer lateral to be constructed at the sign shop, a city-owned building. Motion carried 3 to 0. Item number 3, review and consider approving changes to the northbound and southbound driving lane configurations on A Street at the intersection of Chestnut Street. Motion by Kellogg, second by Kubashak, was to direct staff to reach out to DOT to change 8th Street pavement markings at Chestnut Street. Motion carried 3 to 0. Review and consider approving changes to the lawn mowing practices and procedures on the city-owned boulevard at the south side of the expressway between Lincoln Street and First Street South. Motion by Kubashak, second by Rayom, to postpone item number 4 until the next month's Public Works agenda. Motion carried 3 to 0. Review and consider approving the creation of an ad hoc committee to oversee a citizen-sponsored tree replacement initiative for Robinson Park and other areas in the city from the aftermath of the catastrophic storm that occurred last July. Motion by Kellogg, second by Kubashak, was to recommend the Parks Commission form an ad hoc committee of citizens, Alder Persons, and park commissioners to determine the future of Robinson Park. Motion carried 3 to 0. Review and consider approving the authorization and release of a request for proposals for Central East Center parking lot pavement project. Item was discussed. Item number 7, review and consider approving a proposal from MSA for the 2019 traffic study. Motion by Kubashak, second by Rayom, was carried to approve the MSA 2019 traffic study proposal. Motion carried 3 to 0. Review and consider removing the no-parking restriction on Baker Drive between Washington Street and Franklin Street. Motion by Kubashak, second by Rayom, was carried to remove the no-parking restriction on Baker Drive between Washington Street and Franklin Street. Motion carried 3 to 0. Item number 9, Director of Public Works report, the Director of Public Works report was reviewed. Item 10, review referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Item 11, adjourn. Motion by Rayom, second by Kellogg, was carried to adjourn. Motion carried 3 to 0. Meeting adjourned at 8:59 PM. And with that, I make a motion to approve the Public Works report.
Motion to approve by Kubashak, second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 17C, Human Resources Committee meeting held on September 4th. Alder Person Blazer?
Let's see. The Human Resource Committee met at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, September 4th, in the third-floor conference room at City Hall. List of members are on file at the city clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. The item to review and consider for approval, revised longevity and holidays policy. The purpose of this is to align these two policies with the current separation of employment policy. There was a brief discussion concerning the policies. A motion was made by Alder Person Zerflu and seconded by Alder Person Kellogg to approve the policies as presented, and that motion passed. Item 3 is to review and consider for approval the extension of the city's contract with Lorelei Führer for inspection services. The original letter of intent dated May 22nd with Lorelei Führer expires on September 30th, 2019, and the Director of Community Development has requested that our current contract be extended. That motion was made by Alder Person Kellogg and seconded by Alder Person Zerflu to extend the contract through December 31st, 2019, at the current rate of $50 per hour. That motion passed. Item 4 was to discuss approval for an increase in hourly pay rate for the election workers for future city elections. The city clerk explained that the election workers have not had an increase in their pay rate for the past four years. This request is being made in an effort to align the election workers' pay with comparable municipalities. A motion was made by Alder Person Blazer, seconded by Alder Person Kellogg, to increase the rate of pay for election workers to $11 per hour, and that motion passed. Item 5 is a discussion and review of a proposal from Sarah Christensen that addresses next step as a follow-up to employee engagement survey. Sarah Christensen was, will present... She will present her recommendations, and the committee take action for next steps. There was a discussion concerning follow-up to the employee engagement survey. And Sarah Christensen presented her recommendations. Motion was made by Alder Person Blazer and seconded by Alder Person Zerflu to retain Sarah Christensen to conduct focus groups for all city employees during the quarter four of 2019 at a cost not to exceed $7,000, travel costs being additional. That motion passed. The next meeting has been scheduled for October 8th at 5:00 PM, and that HR meeting adjourned at 6:04 PM. Anybody want to hold anything out? And with that, I make a motion to approve the report.
Motion to approve by Blazer, is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 18, on our agenda this evening is reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and departmental reports. Item A, McMillan Memorial Library, held on July 18th and August 21st. Item B, Southwood County Airport Commission, held on August 8th. Item C, the Park and Rec Commission, held on August 12th. Item D, the Police and Fire Commission, held on August 14th and September 11th. Item E, the Water Works and Lighting Commission, regular and special meetings, held August 14th. Item F, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held September 4th. Item G, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Summary for August. And item H, the Zoning Board of Appeals, held September 10th. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding those items?
Move to accept. There we go.
Motion by Kellogg, is there a second? Second by Kubashak. Are there requests to speak? Seeing no requests. Alder Person Rayom?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just got to find the right one here. Park and Rec, anyway. I don't... Just some comments on it. And we don't have the minutes of, from the last Park and Rec meeting of this month that took place last week, Monday, on the 9th. Item 3, they have a confirmation on Sculpture Park meeting times. Now, I didn't hear that... There wasn't anybody from Sculpture Park Committee that was there at the Park and Rec last week, but they did appoint somebody to be on the committee from Park and Rec. But, I don't know, this seems to be like a committee that doesn't have everything, I guess, maybe kosher or whatever, put together, and that... To me, it seems, anyway, to have been a couple of these meetings that... Of that... I hope we're not jumping the gun on giving locations in different areas, of different locations in the city, in the parks, to put up this without maybe fully understanding what's going on or of that and that. Item 4 in there has to do with Central Wisconsin Gift of Life. It has to honor, have an area to honor organ transplant donors and recipients, and to bring awareness to organ donations, and which I agree with. But they're looking at Legion Park in the minutes here, and that... Which may be fine, but also, you know, another option that I think maybe to consider more thoroughly, and that's a part that we just redid too, but that's also across from the hospital, is Demet's Park. As long as with the organ donation and that, would that be more of a logical place to put this? And again, that was to come back with details to be brought back to a future meeting that was... It wasn't on the agenda last week, but so we're still waiting for more info on that. I wasn't at the last airport meeting, so I don't know what was done with the Dog Park. I do believe that there was, might have been on the agenda, if I remember right. But anyway, at the Park and Rec meeting, it was mentioned about that and possible location of airport property, which is in the... It's in the town of Grand Rapids, but it's owned by the Airport Commission. But the question I have on that is really, in that area, does Park and Rec really have jurisdiction over something like that? It's not one of our parks. It seems to be something that falls more within the airport as owning the property, but that belongs to Grand Rapids. So, I don't know that that really falls within... That location would fall into Park and Rec's jurisdiction. So, that's just those comments on that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? I would just comment on the Dog Park component. There's been a lot of residents that are from the city, from outside the city, that have engaged on this topic. I think there's at least three groups, by my count, that are working towards something on this topic, and I think they're trying to get their house in order before they come before the city or perhaps to the county. I know there was a lot of suggestion at the Airport Commission discussion that the county consider designated a portion of county property, which, you know, at this point, the city has not suggested any locations to any of the particular groups. They're trying to get their house in order, as I understand. Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I...
Alder Person Bergenski, did you want to... Did you have something to...
I'd like to speak for a minute.
Yeah, if we could just have the microphone, make sure the microphone is on.
I'm not familiar at this point what's going on at the airport, but I just have some questions. Number 1, I read someplace in the minutes here where the building that's to be constructed would cost $1,800,000. Is that correct?
Correct, for the hangar you're talking about? Correct.
Okay. I think a hangar of that size can be a white elephant, it can be a moneymaker, or it can be a money loser. So, who's going to rent that large hangar? And will it be rented during the wintertime, when we have to provide utilities such as heat, water, light, and all that stuff?
So, the commission hangar will be paid for entirely by state aid, so there isn't any local match on that particular project. 100% funded by the state earmark that was provided to the airport on the construction side of it. As far as the demand for use, the airport commission, or sorry, the airport manager can better articulate the amount of requests that he received. I think he had been keeping track of that, basically, over the course of the season. People called, and if they needed hangar, overnight hangar services, they traveled to another airport. And as far as the winter use, currently, we don't have a hangar that can store all the snow removal equipment that the commission owns indoors. And so, this hangar then would be able to double as our snow removal equipment storage area in the wintertime. And I don't think there's an intent to heat the hangar unless there's a tenant, which the overnight rates have not been established for that hangar as of today.
So, will it need to be heated in the winter, whether there's an airplane in it or not?
I believe because we're going with the in-floor heating, the idea was that it was more on-demand. So, if there's... No, I think to answer your question, there... If it would be heated, it would probably be a very low, you know, low temperature, because the equipment doesn't require... Snow removal equipment doesn't require the heat.
And has other heating systems been looked at, other than heating in the floor?
Yeah, there were two heating systems specced with the bid process, and in-floor heating was ultimately decided to go with for efficiency purposes, as well as the ability to bring up and down the temperature without having to heat it. I think the other, I think it was just a forced, not a forced air, but like a gas system was the other alternative.
And on the bids, no. And on the bids now, in the minutes, there was one bidder listed for the one point eight million. Were there other bidders, and what did they bid? And there were some changes apparently to the specifications, did everyone have a chance to bid on those changes?
Good questions. The other bidder, qualifying bidder, was Brickell Brothers out of La Crosse area, they were significantly higher, and there were not actually changes to the scope, there were just the alternates that we selected, that all bidders had, had bid in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the questions. Other, no, seeing no further requests to speak, we can go back into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, item nineteen is reading of written referrals of communications to committees. The Clerk, I'll go to you.
I have three referrals, the first is from Alderperson Katnack, what committee was this for?
Public Works.
For the Public Works Committee, for, to consider a camera security system for the Wisconsin Rapids Skate Park located on Chestnut and Eighth Street. Second referral is from Alderperson Kellogg to the Public Works Committee. The request is to develop a way to systematically pick up large refuse collections. And the third one is also from Alderperson Kellogg, this one is to the Finance and Property Committee, to develop a method to reduce the cost of police overtime for the taxpayer by January two thousand twenty.
Thank you. That's all you had for written referral? Okay. Alderperson Kubaszek, you have a request to speak?
Thank you, I apologize, what committee was the second request for? I wasn't paying attention.
It was also for Public Works.
Alderperson Zerflu?
We can get, we can put in a referral anytime before a committee meeting, right? It doesn't have to be, like, due by council. Okay, thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Have a motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Blazer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, stand adjourned. Thank you all for your attention, have a good rest of your evening.